Senate Bill Number 472 SD-1 establishes possession of marijuana of one ounce or less as a civil violation that is subject to a fine of $1,000 and that the direct civil fines and penalties for violations be deposited by the State Director of Finance to the credit of the State General Fund. Introduced by Ms. Willie Waived GRE DC.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 81-13?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Willie, seconded by Ms. Ford. Would you like me to call anyone to the table first, or you just like to open discussion? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Willie.
Okay. In my opinion, too often, local governments avoid controversial issues, especially if being addressed on another government level. So I want to be clear that it's my intent, as here, to bring forward this issue or others to the Council, controversial matters that are important to the people on this island, so that we can discuss them in an adult way as problem solvers, in particular, whereas here, there are competing legitimate interests. And I want to underline that word, legitimate concerns and interests. Right now, this issue is being debated in Honolulu with an ocean between us. I want things to be discussed here, so that we act more proactively and review these issues. I also want to focus that what I'm talking about here, or what I see this issue, is one of what is the appropriate punishment. I am not here to discuss whether we legalize marijuana or not. But at the same time, I think that what is clear from the discussion and from the testimony and from the emails I've received, is the fear that decriminalizing is a slippery slope towards legalizing. And I do appreciate that. But at the same time, I want to focus, and I want to focus the discussion, that what is the appropriate punishment? That's what we're here to discuss. I also just appreciate all of the testimony of everyone, and especially the youth coming forward and expressing their concerns. This is about your lives. These drugs do affect you and those around you in a very important way, and it's your future that we're talking about. In terms of punishment, I just want to say, from some of my concerns on the other side, is it important to stop lumping marijuana with meth and heroin? Is it, for me, at least when I was, you know, in the 60s, 70s, the sort of looking at marijuana and heroin and methamphetamine is sort of one lump, that those were sort of, these are the bad things. Alcohol's fine, these are what's bad. And so that's a concern of mine, that those who's used marijuana are more likely to try and use hard drugs, because it's sort of put as all, sort of a criminal activity. So in that mind, I'm looking at, does, the question is, does moving this over to a civil fine somewhat separate those and recognize that, not that marijuana use is good, but that how do we punish it and how do we separate it out from something along the lines of meth and heroin, which are so devastating in their addictiveness? I also see people that I have known, who now have criminal records for small amounts of marijuana, that has really harmed their life and their future. And we can say, okay, we're not, you know, the police office, even if they could arrest someone for these amounts, they're not doing it. But let me just say, as a lawyer, I'm really into the rule of law. I like laws to be obeyed. I like it that if we don't like them, that we change them, we don't just ignore them. I also am concerned, the amount of funds of arrests and prosecution for small amounts. And just the whole, there's an attitude and an approach of a government towards its people, and that we mean what we say and we say what we mean. Let me also say that in my family, just to add a little personal, it's really alcohol that's been devastating, and in its impact, and not those who've used marijuana. I don't use marijuana, but there are a number of people in my family that have. And finally, I want to say that I have experience with the sale or the use of medical marijuana. In California, in San Jose, one of my daughters has Lyme disease and was very, great pain, just wanted to die, and had never, didn't like drugs, but finally, it became clear, we found that the only thing that worked was, for her nerve pain, was marijuana. Now, again, I want to separate out that we do have a program for medical marijuana, that that's not at issue. But I think all of these things get crowded. I do, I expect that I'm going to withdraw this motion, but I feel it's this discussion or this resolution, but I think this is important, beginning discussion and how we look at things. And the only thing I again ask other Council members to focus on, the question of what is the appropriate punishment? Not what you all think we should think should be done in terms of legalization.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Ms. Plundexter.
Okay. When you asked that we not focus on the legalization, but in your resolution, you have a whereas in 2012, voters of Colorado, and you reference the legal, the first state to legalize and regulate the production, possession, and distribution of marijuana for persons aged 21 and older. So that opens up the discussion for legalization of marijuana. So with that said, I'd like to call Dr. Wassan. I have some questions for you. Could you come up to the table? Can you just identify yourself for the record?
I'm Dr. Jamal Wassan.
Okay. Can you get, yeah, the microphone enough? And if you, I can ask you to, is the microphone on?
The light, yeah. Bright green will light up.
Oh, there it is now.
Okay, good. And I'd like to ask you to just speak slowly, so we can all understand, because I know sometimes, when you were timed during the three minutes, everybody tries to rush to get everything in on three minutes, and we kind of miss things, and this is really important to me. You said something about affecting the cognitive thinking, so what I'd like to know is, how does it affect the cognitive, what does it do to the brain, like other substances? How does, what makes that happen? And then, and then go into how, you talked about the, something about maybe an IQ level dropping? So can you explain that, please? How does, how does a person get addicted to marijuana? What does it affect, how does it affect the brain?
Okay. And I will try to speak slower. I'm originally from New Jersey, and back there, we speak fast. But I've been here since 1993, so I should be able to speak, you know, slow enough. First of all, we've always known, in science, you know, and I heard some gentleman before was saying that that doesn't sound like real science. I think that's our problem. We want to ignore real science and come with our opinion, and I think it's time for us to stop doing that, and just speak about what the science is actually saying. The science and just, anyone who's ever used Paccalolo, and I have smoked Paccalolo, okay? So I don't anymore, obviously, but I have. And you know, the reason why you're smoking Paccalolo is because of the effect. And the effect is to help you to feel more relaxed, and in some people, they want to go further than that, they want to get real stoned, so, which has a slightly mild hallucinogenic effect. When it comes to the IQ, the frontal lobe, or we call it the singular anterior cingular cortex, was the frontal lobe, was the part where we think with, okay? This is what makes us so unique, is this part of our brain up here. This part of our brain back here is called reptilian or hind brain, that just controls involuntary actions and all those issues, blood pressure and all that. And we have the midbrain or limbic system, which controls our emotional. It is a neocortex is what we think with, okay? So we talk about intellect or IQ, that's what's being impacted. We look at a child, an adolescent ages of 13, the brain doesn't stop developing until around 24, 25, now we're saying. So a study was done, and a study was done in New Zealand, over a thousand something of people from the age of 13, they began, and they finished at the age of 38. So we're talking about longitudinal study, okay? They went on for 25 years under controlled circumstances. And what they found was that there was an eight percent to 10, eight to 10 percent, but they hold it eight, an eight percent drop in IQ, because that part of the brain that is being developed is being, the anterior cingular cortex is actually being impacted by the marijuana. It's actually going to that part of the brain, affecting them. So the drop. Now, this is significant, because you need to understand that we have, people here are lawyers, if, you may have had, you know, lawyers are really, and most professionals, IQs are called very bright, you know, 110 or higher. You take away those 10 points or eight points, then you're down to one or two, you're not as bright as you were. And the study also shows you do not recover. So if you were doing at least three days a week of marijuana, ages of 13 up to 25, in this study with the 38, then you might not be lawyers sitting in this room right now. So we're looking, we're looking at...
Can you just say that again?
I sped up again, okay.
You dropped the eight points.
If you were, dropping the eight points, dropping from being very bright, down to just being average or low average, you might not be sitting in this room, you might have been able to pass that LSAT, do some of those studies you're able to do, and concentrate and focus. So that's what a part of the concern is. We're half-caking, we have these adolescents that we're hoping will grow up and become leaders in the state of Hawaii, and like Obama, maybe even president. But if you're constantly doing this, and that's, that's the problem, they're not casual users, because that's not what we're pushing for their children. Because we're saying that it's really not a serious drug. And I have to disagree, you know? All these other hard drugs, for example, that we're talking about here, it's only tobacco that kills half a million people a year. So you can drop ice and heroin and all that off the map, we want to get about, which is the one that's really killing everybody, is cigarettes. So it's not about the impact that it's doing on the society as a whole, it's what it's doing for the individual.
And when you talk about cigarettes, does, I read somewhere that marijuana has 60% more cancer-causing agents than cigarettes, is that...
Well, we know it has 60 identifying different chemicals that are actually within marijuana that are not in cigarettes. And we do know that if they were smoking, the studies have not been, because remember I just said, there's only been like 20 or so clinical trials, and we're talking about like 300 people or so, that did this maximum studies on this. So the preliminary respiratory disease or illnesses, they say that there is a link there, they're seeing it, but they just haven't smoked enough. They don't smoke three packs a day, okay? But once they do that, so it's the delivery system that is a problem. Now, and also, let's be clear, I am not against marijuana or tetrahydrocannabinol, that's the kind we're talking about, being used to treat people with Lyme disease or neuropathic problems, or for anorexia, which helps them to eat or cancer, but it's not the problem. What we're talking about, and this is what the AMA is saying, you know, not for the smoking marijuana stuff, they're saying we should have a control study, move it off of Schedule One, which includes heroin, LSD, and peyote, move it off of that schedule, so that they can do real testing on it, because it's illegal to do so. And therefore, they can define and prescribe medication which has tetrahydrocannabinol in it, like Marinol, and Canada has one called Severtec, which they're using now for a spray, which is a quick delivery system, so that we'll stop smoking it. That is a poor way to get marijuana into a system, because it has other health risks. It does, however, it does help for AIDS victims, and anorexia, and cancer, and all that. So there's no issue with that. It's just, there's a way to do that, without getting the high, and also being able to concentrate on getting the effects that we really want, the medical effects we really want to.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Logon.
This is such a controversial issue. And as I thought about it and thought about it, I go back to my core values, and that's integrity first, remember the people, and excellence with aloha. And first, what are we really doing? Right now, as a council, we're debating and we're discussing this resolution. And this resolution, if it passes, it's saying that we support Senate Bill Number 472, that Senator Russell Rutterman is advocating for in the state. So what I'm hearing from the testimonies, is I hear legalization, I hear criminalization, and I hear medical. Now, the difference between the three, legalization, it's legal within the state. Criminalization is, it doesn't become a criminal punishment, so it's a civil punishment. And medical is, it's used for a disease or some cause of illness. Now, I thought about it. So currently, what is our state criminal offense for marijuana? And as I went through some of the government websites, and also some of the pro-marijuana websites and anti-marijuana websites, right now, marijuana, you are max fine $1,000, 30 days incarceration, and a misdemeanor fine, a misdemeanor. So, looking at it, what will happen if a person get a misdemeanor? And what will happen if a person get a felony? And as I research more and more, a person who has a felony will be restricted of some rights, which is the right to vote, the right to be in a jury, and the right to actually enlist in the military. I myself was in the military. And do I want to give someone a felony crime for taking marijuana under an ounce? And as I look at it, do I want someone, an individual, to lose their right to vote, lose their right to participate in government, and lose their right to serve their country? And right now, according to our laws, it's not a felony. So if you get busted under an ounce, it's a misdemeanor, so they don't lose that right. So as I look it over, what really change if Senate Bill Number 472 become enacted? The difference is the 30-day incarceration. So why do we actually have a 30-day incarceration? It's to make it severe. It's to make it, make it a deterrent. And as I look at what a deterrent is, the severity, one thing that must comply is the, our police officers must enforce the law. And right now, we, as a county, have passed this low-priority ordinance. And the low-priority ordinance, the voters approved it in 2008, 34,957 to 25,464, but that's 2008. A lot of things can happen in four years. Look at the Council, six new elected officials. That's a dramatic change. So is it the same mindset? Because it goes back to my core values, I got to remember the people, I got to remember why I'm here. And so I'm thinking it over, and I think about my sister. I think about what kind of message do I want to tell my little sister? And I tell her, don't smoke, don't do it, whatever you do, don't do it. But I know her, she doesn't listen to me. When she's 18, she's going to do what she wants to do. And right now, I know that it's not, I know she's not going to lose her right to vote, lose her right to participate, and lose her right to be in the military. What we really need to do is spend time with our families, and make sure that we keep our families away from marijuana, and criminalize meth, criminalize ice, crack. So I have a tough decision to make, and right now, I'm trying to keep true to my core values, and that's integrity first, remember the people, and excellence with aloha. I just want the public to understand that this is where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Logon. I'm going to go to Ms. Ford.
Thank you. I've got some questions for several people. Doctor, just for the record again, would you state what your PhD is in?
My PhD is in health psychology.
Okay. A little later on, I'm going to go into my personal history, not with drugs, because I don't have any personal history with drugs. But my youngest daughter is working on her PhD in psychology, and she specializes in teenagers with addictions. That's her specialty, and she's pretty highly placed in the state of California for that. She doesn't run anything like you do. But one of the things that she has told me is that, when you're dealing with teenagers, the 13 to, well, up to 25, you say, the brain, the frontal lobe is developing. One of the things that she has been adamant about, and she's against smoking pot, especially by teenagers, and this bill is not about teenagers, but all of this has relevance to this issue. She has told me that between the ages of 13 and 25, that's the time of your life, when your frontal lobes are developing, and you're developing, hold on, the ability to use logic, and to control impulses, and to determine long-term consequences of your potential action. And what she's advising me is that when you smoke pot, I'm not talking once in your life, but you know, on a regular basis, that those circuits don't wire properly, and you have a case basically of arrested development. You're forever 13. Now, how many of us want to be walking around the planet with a mind of a 13-year-old? I mean, it's great when you're 13, but it isn't great when you're 40, or 20, or something like that. Doctor, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, we call that fixation. And what happens in the adolescent period of time, you know, they're going through our social development stage, we call ego-identity versus role confusion. That's where the learning judgment...
Please speak slowly.
Okay. They're going through what is called ego-identity versus role confusion during that time period. That's where they're trying to figure out what is really what's right and what's wrong. They're really trying to get their values locked in, like you were saying. And they can't do it very well if the part of the brain that actually handles that is not being wired correctly, is being blocked. So therefore, they're fixated at the point of where they were in the judgment at 13 or 14, and they don't get to be fully functioning adults. See, you know, now, we know this, because you can't rent a car until you're aged 25. They already knew that, because their brain wasn't fully developed correctly. That's why the car rental company, they were ahead of everybody else, they knew it, so they're not going to rent you the car. So if we understand that, and we place a man on the back in a context with the drug, and we're saying that we're purposely stopping those connections, those neurons, from connecting correctly in the anterior cingular cortex, where the judgment is being formed, then you've just, you screwed them up. So we're not just talking now about intelligence, whether they'll be bright or not, we're now talking about being able to make correct decisions based on having had that part of our brain that's being wired, has been able to take and synthesize those adjustments that make sense, and makes logic. You know, illegal, immoral, and irresponsible are certain values. If it's illegal, immoral, irresponsible, I'm not going to do it. What if your brain is wired so that, hey, I don't think that this is immoral, or I don't think this is irresponsible, so then your behavior is going to match what your thoughts are? And we got to, we got to really grasp that. All behavior serves a purpose. So if my brain is not wired to say that this is wrong, then my purpose for doing this, smoking, or acting certain behaviors, is really okay. And it's you people that are screwed up, it's not me. And they don't get it. They don't get it. And that's scary.
Okay. Thank you. And the gentleman in the orange, I don't remember, stay there, I'm sure other people have questions. Sir, would you come on up? I believe that you testified your work with 12-step programs?
Yes.
Okay, please have a seat. I want you to reintroduce yourself and explain the type of 12-step programs, and just name the programs that you work with.
Yes. My name is John Gallagher, and I just want to, I only had three minutes, so I'm not even sure what I said.
Okay. Hold on, sir. I would love to let you go, but they're timing me. No, you're not timing, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you. But I just want, I'm in, I've been in a 12-step program, Narcotics Anonymous, for 25 years, and I have 25 years clean from all drugs. But I want to also emphasize that I'm not representing Narcotics Anonymous, and everything I say here right now is my personal opinion. Working with addicts for 25 years, because that's been my spiritual path.
Okay. And that's good. Now, I would like you to explain to the Council, from your perspective as working in NA, that's Narcotics Anonymous, what it's like dealing with teenagers who are on marijuana, that they've been habituated to marijuana. What are they like to work within a 12-step program?
Well, right now, here in Kona, we have a young people's meeting.
Get closer to the mic.
Get closer. We have a young people's meeting. It's once a week. You have to be really a teenager to go to this meeting, but some of us members go and speak, our experience, you know, to them. All of them, all of them have started with alcohol or pot. That was their first drug of choice, as in like, my whole fellowship, over 90%, those are what we, those are the first drugs we used, and it progressed. They are fighting, they are fighting to not use, from peer pressure, from already letting it in. Because not everybody that drinks is an alcoholic, and not everybody that uses drugs is, some people can smoke pot a little bit, but there's some of us that can't. It triggers something in our frontal, in our lobe, that all of a sudden changes us, like, ah, I found it. I can deal with my family, I can deal with school, and these young people, to hear their stories, and how far behind they are than their peers, and falling backwards, and then all of a sudden, not want to get high, and they get high anyhow, where they lose that control. That's the part that kills me inside. So I'm going to try and make them short, so I can get lots of questions.
Okay.
Because I really love, my friend here, when he said, crack and heroin and cocaine, you know, ooh, let's, all those, but pot. And I'm here to tell you that THC is a very, very powerful drug, and it absolutely alters our state. One, I deal with addicts that use no drug but marijuana. And they come to me, and they, and I work with them, and they fight for freedom of it. Not everybody who smokes, it's going to happen, but it does happen. And like the doctor said, I don't deal with silence, I deal in the trenches, I deal in the back alleys like the cops do when I go make a 12-step call, because somebody's dying of a drug overdose. And they're carrying a whole bunch of weed, because they're selling their weed to get the drug that they've progressed to, because it is absolutely progressive. We know that without a doubt.
All right, thank you. Doctor, I have another question for you. I believe you said that you would like to see marijuana reduced from a Schedule One at the federal level to a Schedule Three, so the studies could be done, right?
Exactly. And that's what the AMA wants to.
Okay, that's fine. I'm going to ask one of our, either one of your captains or both, if you would like to come up, and we'd like to talk to you, I would like to talk to you a little bit about this. Can I ask you, gentlemen, just to step back to the front row, you'll probably get called Okay, while the captains are sitting down, the three of us, among many other people in Kona, work with Neighborhood Watch, and we've had crime sprees periodically. Fortunately, the last one got busted up again. And it's always about the drugs. But I want to, I don't want to get into hard drugs so much, I want to stay with the marijuana. So from the police perspective, when you get a person who maybe just uses marijuana, we all know the basic symptoms, you know, they want to get stoned, they're, you know, get the munchies, and they want to eat everything inside, and they do all these things. Those are the innocuous things. Please explain, from your perspective, the not-so-good stuff that you see, and whether or not marijuana is being used solely or in combination with other things.
Socially, and I'm going to go into socially, and I try and keep some specifics out, but you're regularly, say, a teenage user, and let's go, I know this is not part of the bill, but dispensaries, and this is what we see. Say a dispensary in downtown Kona, it becomes easy, they're selling, what we start to see, and we have seen this, and it hasn't happened in Kona, I'm using it because this is not what I'm talking about, is that you have the kids, and it draws the attention of these kids who just want to come in and smoke a joint. Sounds harmless enough, but we've seen that harmless smoking of a joint turn into harassing of the homeless, and eventually turning into robbing other people, and just general mischief, if that's what you're talking about, at the lowest levels. From the patrol level, what we mostly see when it comes to marijuana arrests, at the misdemeanor level, is they're usually arrested for something... misdemeanor level is they're usually arrested for something else and they actually have the marijuana in their pocket. So a lot of times what you'll see incarcerated, you'll see this big number of marijuana, people incarcerated for marijuana, not mentioning those other cases, be it hard drugs, be it robbery, be it sexual assaults, marijuana is always on their person. From my years in investigative section, you're looking at ninety-five percent of the time every search warrant served, there was some type of marijuana there. And again, you didn't want to get into hard drugs. The Hawaii Police Department, our main, our main priority is ICE, that's the most dangerous drug in our community now, with prescription drug abuse on the sec, you know, a close second.
All right.
I hope I'm answering your question, but-
Thank you. You are, thank you.
That's just, that's just one of the issues.
All right. Thank you, Captain Sherlock. Captain Boski, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I just wanted to add that with marijuana arrests, those come along with, as a side, you know, a side crime in addition to a hard drug, or whether it be abuse or whatever gamut that we come in contact with our citizens with. But again, most of the marijuana, I would say a good high percentage of the marijuana arrests is in conjunction with something else.
Associated with some other drug arrest of some type. Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, don't go far. Would you just step back? And Mr. Ashida, I'm going to ask you to come up here for a second. Mr. Ashida, I'll give you a little pre-warning. We put the lowest priority on the ballot that was initiated by the public. It passed the voters and I thought it had been overturned by the court, and I could be wrong. Could you tell us what the status is right now?
The county's lowest law enforcement priority initiative, which became an ordinance after, I believe-
Two thousand and ten?
Two thousand and ten election, was invalidated by the Circuit Court in Hilo as being violative of both state and federal preemption, what was preempted by both federal and state law. My understanding is, on appeal, the advocates of the lowest law enforcement priority then appealed the Circuit Court's decision. And my understanding and recollection, my recollection is that the intermediate court of appeals agreed that, with the Circuit Court, that the ordinance was preempted. In other words, it's not only unenforceable, it's-
Lincoln, can you speak? I can't hear him.
Yeah, you've got to talk up, Lincoln.
Okay. It's, the intermediate court of appeals agreed with Judge Nakamura, the Circuit Court judge, that federal and state law preempts the enforcement of the lowest law enforcement of cannabis ordinance and that basically ended that. I thought that there had been, the court had extended leave and allowed the parties to, somehow, you know, I asked my duty vic in our office, who was shepherding that case, you know, is this dead, is it, you know, dead, completely dead? And he said, no, I think the court had allowed them to either, perhaps it was to file another request to have the case then removed from the ICA to the Supreme Court. I think Mr. Shimoto knows what I'm talking about. I'm not certain whether that SRI was granted by the Supreme Court or not, but I can check, you know, I can check right now, but basically, basically, essentially, what we had advised the council, the former council at the time that that decision was made to put it to the voters, had come to pass, that, you know, that irrespective of good intentions or how you tried to wordsmith it, to get it passed onto the ballot to, in front of the voters, the federal and state preemption was fairly clear back then and Judge Nakamura essentially agreed with the county's, or at least our position.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ashida. All right, I would like to make just a comment so the public understands where I'm coming from. I am supportive of medical marijuana. I have never questioned the need for that. Whether the delivery system is correct or not is way out of my ballpark. I am concerned about this particular resolution. What I would personally like to see is a resolution from this council to the Congress of the United States, asking them to pull marijuana off of Schedule I and put it on Schedule III. I think that's the appropriate way to handle this. We are hitting a roadblock at the state level for a multitude of reasons. Some I think are very legitimate and I think some are kind of, I'm not so sure about. It's not that I want to advocate for decriminalizing or legalizing marijuana just out in the public, but I do think as a country, we need to treat this differently on Schedule I versus Schedule III. That doesn't resolve the problem that we've got here. I do agree that if we support this bill as it is written at the state, first of all, I don't think it's going to stand up based on this lowest priority thing. And I don't even know why the medical marijuana is being allowed, but you decided to time me, shame on you. But anyway, I don't want to see this get into the hands of our teenagers more than it is. And while this is strictly about adults, twenty-one plus, even at twenty-one, people's brains are still wiring those circuits together and that's a problem. I've never supported drinking at eighteen for, I don't know if that causes circuit damage, but I still have the same concerns about that. So I'm not going to be supporting this as it is written today. I would be interested in seeing something come forward to go to the US Congress, to ask it come from the Schedule I to Schedule III, supporting the AMA. But today, I'm not going to do this, even though I support medical marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Are there additional comments from council members at this time? Ms. Willie?
Could I have one of the officers come forward?
And by the way, I can come back to council members, we are implementing the five-minute rule, but then you can have a second time too.
I think we've also been reducing the time where other people have brought people forward rather than five minutes.
Yes, the timer stops when the speaker is speaking.
Just in terms of punishment with alcohol or DUIs, we've sort of gone towards community service and required counseling. And that's actually the direction, just with my limited knowledge, and I recognize that I do have limited knowledge in this area, would think that we might be more effective in terms of marijuana, where we're looking at what are these social ills and that people are uneducated and unaware of the impact that it has on them and that they become less productive members of the community and do things. I just want to underscore some of what Councilmember Gregor Illigan spoke about and sort of dividing up, it's not sort of one question, are you pro or are you con? It's a complex issue. And I do also support what Ms. Ford said in terms of, let's try to look at some of these issues and not lump marijuana with the hard drugs. I don't believe they should and I do feel that that, putting them in the same category has a major impact on moving that, having it be a gateway use. So I just want to, looking at the punishments, what we have for alcohol, alcohol we haven't really discussed, but it is something, at least in my view, and certainly Sharon Vatusik's view, who spoke yesterday, is extremely harmful and causes a lot of fatalities and a lot of alcohol. So I'm looking at punishments. We have criminal punishments, we have civil punishments, but also, and maybe you called it service punishments and required, I would love to have some of these people that are on it go speak to some of these people as a requirement, more than how much they pay or what's on their record. So I just would appreciate if you have any comments on that or sort of looking at that, those alcohol, where we feel we're making more progress in terms of alcohol, doing those punishments, rather than putting, fining people or other types of punishment.
I apologize. Well, I apologize, as we like to speak, we're kind of, we like to use this thing, weed and seed, and we're, as a police department, we're more on enforcing of the laws. As to what the punishments are or how they come out, I really can't elaborate on that, that'd be a whole different side of our system. But as a police department, we're all for not seeing guys coming through the revolving door or being arrested. If you're asking about what the punishments are and how they're changed, I can't really speak on that, as I'm not part of the judicial system. I apologize.
Well, if that's, you can't speak on it or don't feel comfortable speaking on it, that's, that's-
I understand.
Okay, perhaps, can I move you all, just speaking to, Doctor, can you come forward again for Yes. Can you comment on what I'm just saying and how, would it be useful to encourage punishment where it's community service oriented and involvement with other groups, youth groups or counseling, so that people become more educated and more aware of alternatives and potential long-term impacts of-
Well, I think, you know, education is a key and I do know that when they do go through the court system, the judges that I've actually witnessed do send, regardless of what the drug is, whether it's marijuana or alcohol or meth, they are referred for assessments and treatment, okay? Part of the issue with adolescents that we run into is that they are down at lower levels. They usually go to something called teen court, where they're told, hey, you smoked marijuana chemist, you did this, and here's what we're saying you should do, you need to go in for assessment and treatment, or treatment, which is great, because I didn't say this, but according to their American standards for addiction medicine, that for adolescents, we usually put them at, not at a dependent level of treatment, but at a prevention awareness level of treatment. And it's called ASAM Level Point Zero Five, okay? And if we could do more of that, if we get to the adults or those who are actually stronger violence of the law, they're typically not coming in as awareness, they're coming in as actual treatment because of the fact that they've reached a stage of, not just reasoning, which is earlier than that, but they're at the stage as adults where they are actually influencing these children. So we therefore give them treatment, typically they're given treatment, and I think we should continue to do that.
Okay. And let me say, I'm going to withdraw this resolution, but if someone still has another comment before I do so, that would be fine with me, but then come back.
Could I say something to the council member? You know, when you said the military, for me, you really hit something, you queued up on me and I was taken aback for a second. That's not about the federal issue. I was a Marine in Vietnam at nineteen, I was wounded twice in action, I was actually flown back to the hospital and got out. But I got involved with drugs, specifically marijuana, because it helped numb my feelings. What it also did though, it stopped me from being able to advance and become, go to college or anything. It wasn't until I was able to, and it wasn't, my drug wasn't the other drugs, although I was addicted to opioids, which is what the hospital gave me for my pain, my shrapnel wounds. But it was the marijuana that was blocking my education. And when I stopped that, and that's where, and I was only twenty-one when I got out of the hospital, I need to be real clear that we need to help the youth, and I really am speaking for the youth from my heart, we need to help the youth not have to go through some of those things that I had to go through when I did use marijuana to stuff my feelings and wasn't able to concentrate or focus or do anything.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, Mr. Iligan?
I just wanted to say something short. Yes, we do need to help the youth and thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Ms. Boyd Dexter?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, yesterday we had that presentation by Dr. Vatusik and she did say, you know, what we need to start looking at is the data on how many people are in accidents that are on marijuana, that are causing even deaths on our road, because it alters, you know, the brain. But she was also saying, you know, it's hard for the police to be called off their beat to come and just sit and wait at the hospital in emergency rooms to kind of try to collect that data. We need more police officers. So we need to start looking at, you know, a lot of the things are not documented, but the drugs like alcohol on the roads are killing our people and killing our children. I know that for a fact. And I just want to say too that I do support medical marijuana, however, I will support it once we can regulate the doses, because THC, like you said, in Hawaii, and they've done these studies, we have the THC here level compared to other states. Hawaii, for some reason, is off the charts and very dangerous. If you give, say, my daughter who is neurologically impaired, somebody gives her that, you could kill her, you know, and she wouldn't know the difference because she's a special needs child. That would be so dangerous out there. So if we pass this bill, our public health and safety consequences will be disastrous for this state. Thank you.
What you're saying is that it causes, it does cause a psychiatric break, a psychotic break in some people. People, marijuana is not that benign, that's what you're sharing. It does cause psychiatric breaks.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm going to call on Mr. Onishi and then Ms. Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, listening to great discussion, but just to let members know that right now at the legislature, there's amendments that is being proposed or is in the works in the SB four seven two, SD one. And so, right now, even my staff cannot even get those amendments yet, okay? And some of the amendments that they're looking at is amending the possession by a minor to a petty misdemeanor. Adults will not be able to give minors, I guess marijuana, which makes sense, but then there isn't like in the amendment right now what the penalty is about. And the other stuff is that minors, if they're following with possession, will lose their license, their driver's license for one year, okay? But there's other amendments in this bill that's in the legislature right now on the Senate side that they're doing, but it's not online of what all these penalties are. And so, what to me is like, we need to have the public who came out and testified against this resolution that was brought up, but then also about this Senate bill, is we need to contact all the legislatures. We need to let them know now that we are against this. And I know yesterday there was a, what is it, a rally, yeah, in Honolulu and also like I think in Waimea and stuff like that. And I don't know, police force was at the Capitol and talking to Representative Marcus Oshiro about the, what is it, you know, on how much is an ounce or whatever, and they had all these like fake joints and stuff like that. But then, you know, that's where we need to make noise. And to me, hopefully the papers will print this, because we need to get it out now. I mean, we cannot wait until this televised like five days later, because it's going to be too late. Things could happen already. So we need to, as council members, call up our representatives and let them know that we're against this and how it's going to hurt the families, how it's going to hurt the children, right? And what are we bringing, what are we telling the children? Like, because I coach basketball, twelve and under girls, ten and under girls, and if I do pass this, I'm telling you that it's okay. You know, that's wrong to me. That's how I feel. So, you know, I just, you know, great discussion, but we need to just start sending emails out to our legislatures and letting them know that this is, that they should kill SB four seven two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. I'm going to wrap it up with Ms. Ford.
Okay, I just have one question. I'm asking for a bit of latitude. Doctor, we talked about using marijuana regularly during the growing years thirteen to twenty-five and how the brain circuits and the frontal lobes don't, don't wire themselves together. It triggered a question in my mind, because we just had this discussion yesterday with Dr. Vatusik regarding alcohol and drugs and DUIs, you know, and fatalities. Dr. Vatusek regarding alcohol and drugs and DUIs, you know, and fatalities. When somebody drinks to an excess, and they always, you know, you hear them say, oh, I'm drunk, but I can drive, you know, and they get out on the road, they kill everybody. Um, when you drink alcohol, does it impair those connections that we hope are there? Is that what's going on in their brain when they, they can't say, I've had too much to drink, and I shouldn't be driving? And they get in the car and they drive because they think they can do it? Is it, is it affecting the circuits up here, or just, you're off mic? You have to push the little button, okay?
It's right. It's called the GABA. Gamma amino beta-gas, it's a neuron transmitter that's also in the frontal lobe.
You were talking so fast, I missed the whole thing. Okay, sorry.
There's a neuron transmitter in the frontal lobe called the GABA.
GABA.
GABA. GABA, right. Alcohol goes straight to the GABA. The GABA controls the part, the brakes are put on. That's how we, that's how we're able to make non-impulsive decisions. It controls that part of our brain, rationalization part of our brain. Alcohol goes straight at it, goes straight for it. And it basically shuts it down. See, that's why people, when they drink to excess, they'll keep drinking and they start acting real stupid, because they've now taken the I, which is the intellect, and the E being emotion, they reversed them. The intellect is shut down. The GABA is interfered with. So therefore, they switch it, and they become very emotional, and they do stupid stuff.
Okay. So it is, even if those circuits did make, they grew up enough, the circuits are connected, the GABA is gonna be deactivated if you drink to excess, and then they start acting.
For, for adolescents or adults.
Oh, same thing.
The GABA is hit. The marijuana just goes to the circuit as it develops and to stop it from rewiring for judgment.
All right. All right. I just wanna say this again. The marijuana causes the circuits not to connect permanently.
Right.
Alcohol, at any age, is gonna take care, is gonna knock out the GABA.
Right.
GABA.
Right.
And that means that they're going to start acting impulsively, because the intellect is shut down.
Right.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Council members, would anyone else like to comment?
Okay, so...
Ms. Willie?
Yeah, um, at this time, I'd like to withdraw this resolution and appreciate all the discussion, and I hope that we're able to continue this on different levels. And I think one of the suggestions that's come out, that I feel very important and we could do independently, which is what Ms. Ford is talking about, and, um, what I'm talking about, in terms of not lumping marijuana together with heroin and, um, ice and other Class I, um, drugs. So I appreciate it all, and I think, think that, um, we can all individually say what we wanna say to the legislature. This is SB Four Seven Two, SD One. If you look it up and you wanna follow it, um, uh, on the internet and see what the report's coming out. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, council members. And, um, Resolution Eighty-One Dash Thirteen has been withdrawn.